Good evening. I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on September 23rd at 6:00 PM to order. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Lautenbacher, can you please lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Yes. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic, which stands by nation under God, in whose soul the liberty and justice are.
We'll have public comment now. I have cards. If you meant to speak at this part of the meeting, there are cards on what I affectionately call the music stand because I can never remember what it's called. George Houston, if you'll join us, you'll have three minutes, sir. Just come on up.
My name is George Houston. I live on Lou Ray Court. And I'm coming to ask you to consider having a public meeting concerning the United States Postal Service for Dunwoody. I had a package, a very critical package, that was mailed on the 6th of September, received very soon thereafter by the 9th in Chicago at the Distribution Center. It has been in transit to Atlanta ever since. They have no idea, although they have tracking, they have no idea where it is. It's really frustrating. And I know that Senator Ossoff is very concerned about this issue. This is not the first instance I've had with the United States Postal Service. So far, it's probably cost me an additional interest on payments and lack of receipt of payments in excess of several hundred dollars. I'm having to duplicate all of my prescription meds as a result of not having received the proper mailing within the timeframe that was allowed. What I don't understand is I don't understand why there's not a sense of urgency about this. My request is that Dunwoody have a public forum inviting the citizens of Dunwoody and the postal service employees to come and meet with Senator Ossoff and our United States representatives to address this problem and include the regional manager for the postal service at the same meeting. This is urgent. The postal service employees are so frustrated. My carrier is frustrated. The desk clerks at Dunwoody are first frustrated. Dunwoody cannot answer any questions anymore because everything is being referred down to another post office, which is inconvenient for those of us that live in Dunwoody. This is a serious problem that needs immediate attention. Thank you.
Thank you. John Butler. Well, once you start, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is John Butler. I am the project manager for the Vietnam War Memorial, which is going to be installed in Brookrun Park, and it's in final stages of completion as we speak. With me are Dunwoody residents, actually Dunwoody resident and fellow memorial project team member Jay Pryor. And Long Tran will be here right when I finish. Together, together, we represent the 12-member member project team, the collaborative partnership between the Vietnamese-American community of Georgia and the United States Vietnam Veterans of the AVVBA and the hundreds of volunteers and donors who are making this million-dollar project possible. As a reminder, this project is rare because it honors both Vietnamese and US soldiers who died fighting for freedom from communism during the Vietnam War. It is unique because it was developed as an equal partnership between Vietnam refugees and US Vietnam veterans. We are here to express our respect, appreciation, and patience with our respects and appreciation for you, the city council, for your support, cooperation, and patience with us as we develop this significant memorial in your beautiful Brookrun Park. We are also here to formally invite you to attend as honored VIP guests at our ribbon-cutting and dedication ceremony at 11 o'clock on Saturday, October the 5th, at the site in Brookrun Park. In keeping with our project partnership, we will have two keynote speakers. One will be Laffy Chow Flora, US Army Major General, retired, who escaped communist Vietnam in 1980 as a child with his family in a boat. The other will be Ron Helmle, Lieutenant General, US Army, retired, who served two tours in Vietnam and later served as commanding general of the US Army Reserve Command. Live music will be provided by the Golden Eagles Band from the Corps of Cadets at the University of North Georgia. A Huey helicopter that served in combat in Vietnam will be there on display. Please join us and bring your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That completes the cards. I have for now, there'll be another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. And, um, next, David Ayers. Is he here? I see him.
Good evening. I'm David Ayers, City of Dunwoody Public Works Department. And I'm proud to be here tonight to, along with the officials from the Georgia Department of Transportation, to present a big check to us. The city applied for a grant through the Georgia Department of Transportation through their Road Safety Action Plan program. We were awarded $439,500. We'll be using these funds to install two pedestrian hybrid beacons. One is, the installation is already complete, which is at Chestnut Elementary. The other is underway on Perimeter Northwest. We'll also be installing rapid, the RRFBs or rectangular rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian safety crossings at three locations. Charing Lane at the park on Peter Road. We'll be doing an intersection radius improvement along with pedestrian improvements at Kingsdown Road and Shambly Dunwoody Road, and also at Roberts Drive and the park. We'll also be doing an arc at median improvement on Hammond Drive to prevent, to keep, to improve vehicles and safety features at that location as well. So tonight, with Georgia Department of Transportation representatives out of District 7, we have our district engineer, Mr. Paul Denard, our district state aid coordinator, Mr. Trey Kent, and we also have the district communications officer, Ms. Melody Peoples. So if you guys would like to come up now, and I'd like to invite you guys down to also just pay in a photo opportunity so we can get our check. Thank you. Say, yeah.
Thank you. So they asked me to say a few words. My name is Paul Denard. I'm the district engineer from Georgia Department of Transportation, District 7, and we are delighted to be here before you this evening to present this grant, this in our fiscal year 24 Safety Action Plan. Just to let you all know, this is a very important program for us. Safety is our number one concern for our projects, our roadways. We incorporate all of those things into all of the things that we do throughout the department and throughout the state safety program. And with 1,400, nearly 1,400 vehicle fatalities, fatalities on Georgia roadways last year, making improvements and funding improvements like the one that David spoke about just earlier is very important to us. And one thing that I really, really enjoy about the safety improvements off-system, by the way, that are going and that are being funded are the fact that they're sending or centering around pedestrian safety. So that's one thing that's very critical and very important as we address our severe injuries and our fatalities on our roadway. So again, congratulations, and we're glad to be a partner in pursuing safety in transportation.
Thank you so much, because we prioritize pedestrian safety, and these improvements are transformative for the pedestrians who use these routes and also helps, actually helps the drivers be more aware and drive more safely. Thank you, David Ayers, wherever you went, for shepherding us through all these grant processes. And we are always open for more funding. We always have shovel-ready projects that will meet any safety standards, so you just let us know. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Rachel.
Yep. Hi, good evening. So I have, I have two presentations back-to-back. So as you know, our nonprofit guidelines that were adopted in 2021 set guidelines to help strengthen the partnerships between City of Dunwoody and our, and our partners. So we ask them that every year, either orally or in writing, they come to present kind of what they've done for the year for you all. The first up is Spruil. The Parks and Recreation Department is proud to call Spruil Center for the Arts a partner. Spruil Center for the Arts fosters creativity and social connections through the arts by offering a diverse visual arts program to students of all ages and skill levels, providing a platform for artists to share their talents through exhibitions, sales, and instructional opportunities, and enriching community through programs designed to inspire the artists and everyone. And here to take a deep dive into what they've done this year is the CEO, Alan Muffner.
Thank you, Rachel.
Just, just right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here again. It's always a privilege to come up here and speak before you. Unfortunately, we do not have a six-figure check to hand over to the city, but we do have some accolades that we like to speak of. While I have a quick opportunity to, since David was just up here, I wanted to commend him on the work he's doing at the library parking. I know that that's never an easy task, and he's undergone a lot of challenges with the programs that are going on there and how busy we are. And he stepped out, so you'll have to pass it on, but he's done an incredible job and has been a great representative for you guys out there. We're dealing with daily challenges, so just wanted to thank him and recognize his work out there as well. With that said, so we usually come in the beginning of the year and kind of give a where we are update. I will let you know that at any point in time, you can go to our website to get the most up-to-date information, including our annual impact report, which is generally published depending on when I get around to it, but generally around March or April each year. And that is really the best way to get a sense of what we've done in the past year. As you guys know, most companies have an annual report, public companies. We do an impact report because we are a public company in a different sense. And so we like to measure our community impact through that mechanism each year. There's various tabs. It's very searchable and goes into a lot of what we've done, including a month-by-month breakout of what we do for the community. But with that said, we had a fantastic year last year. We had 1,100 members support us. We taught more than almost 1,000 different classes and workshops over the course of the year. We had more than 7,000 students enrolled, plus another 1,000-plus campers. We had nearly 3,000 visitors to our gallery. And a program that a lot of people don't know about is our Open Studios program. When you enroll in a class, it's Spruil because we have such extensive studios that most individual... That was scary. Most individual artists don't have, and I thought that was David coming to put a 20 in my pocket. Richard. That most artists don't have at home, we allow them open studio space to come and fine-tune their craft. It's hard to learn jewelry. It's hard to learn ceramics. It's hard to learn a lot of the things that we do mosaic stained glass in a two-hour, once-a-week workshop. So we had nearly 3,000 students participate in these open studio classes as well, which they're able to do at no additional charge after their initial enrollment. As I mentioned, we offer 983 classes. You may not know, we had 29 different mediums represented through those classes. I'm not going to go into the details. Again, this is in our impact report. Needless to say, we are one of the region's biggest art centers, and we're proud to have a home here in Dunwoody. We serve from throughout the region. About 50% of our enrolled students come from the five city areas, Dunwoody, Sandy Springs, Shambly, Dorville, Brookhaven, and the other 50% come from without that rate, from throughout the state and even some out of state. We frequently have visitors from North Carolina, Tennessee, South Georgia is still our state, but we'll not go there. As far as our impact, you'll see last year, we had an aberration in terms of where our source of government, of source of funding came from. That government grant represents the million-dollar contribution from the city towards our facility expansion. That's the 8,300 square foot facility that we opened in January. That's why that is such a big change from year over year. We still generate most of our income from earned income from our classes, fees, and workshops, and that was just about $1.3 million. In addition, we generate revenues from our summer camp, from our fundraising, from donations that we receive that are restricted to either individual departments or individual programs, as well as our membership fees and our gallery exhibits and sales. As far as using those funds, again, most of it is put back into the organization and in support of artists and support of our mission. So that would be our programming, our administrative and operating costs. And you'll see a large chunk of that goes to our instructor pay and our artist's pay. Nearly almost $700,000 back into the artistic community and supporting of artists. As you guys are well aware, it's not easy being an artist, and so a big part of our mission is supporting artists with exhibition opportunities, but then also opportunities to teach and share their craft. And as I'm, excuse me, as I mentioned, all of this information is in our impact report on our website. So the big question, I think, why we're here today is what's the impact of the new building on Spruil and our community? As far as enrollment, the impact's been tremendous. To date, we are able to serve 659 more students than we were last year. We're projecting an incredible 2,200 students to join us this fall for programs, which, same was plugged, just started yesterday. Still plenty of time in enroll. We have 100 classes starting this week, another 100 starting in October, and of course, we program through the holidays. But you'll see that these enrollment figures have gone up as much as by plus 200 last quarter year over year because of the expanded facilities. What it's also done is eliminated a lot of the buildup on our waitlist. As you guys are aware, as part of this build-out, we were trying to eliminate the backlog of students that were trying to get into classes, especially at busy times. That waitlist, I'm proud to say, was down from 712 in 2023 to only 300 only, but 372 this year. Sometimes it's hard to duplicate a teacher. Sometimes it's hard to duplicate a class availability at a peak time like a Saturday or a weeknight. The other big thing we did last year in conjunction with the building of the new space was undergo a strategic plan. This was a six-month-long process that we did in partnership with not only the city and other key stakeholders, but our students, our board, our instructors, other arts facilities, and other regional organizations. We interviewed 42 different people. We held seven hours of strategic ideation workshops on where we should be going. We researched five both regional and nationally-recognized art centers for best practices. And we came up with four strategic objectives as part of our outcomes, 15 key initiatives, and we prioritized 36 tactics that we're trying to undertake in the coming three years. Big picture, so this is a 91-page document, also available on our website. We want to make sure that we put our money where our mouth is and we're accountable for these objectives. But big picture, this year, we're growing our team and operationalizing the new facility. We are communicating better about the gallery. We have so many people in this community that still are not aware of what a great resource that gallery is for culture here. There's not very many galleries in the perimeter, and we're proud to represent a number of artists through the gallery. And also to activate our new plaza with programming, and the whole idea is to bring community together. Next year, we're excited to celebrate our 50th anniversary, looking forward to presenting a new brand identity for the organization that reflects a lot of these changes that you guys have been so integral in helping us achieve. And also undergoing one of our big initiatives, which is creating studio space for artists. As you guys know, it's really challenging to live, work, and play in the same community, especially in our community. And if we can foster the artists and give them a place to work here in the area, that's something that we're striving to do. So that's a big undertaking that we're going to be strategizing on a little bit as the year comes by. And then 2026 is further enhancing the visitor experience at the Cultural Arts Center. We have this wonderful plaza space that we're going to be activating with programming this year. We want this to be a community center based on the arts. Right now, we still have a bit of a feel of a, I don't know, 1950s schoolhouse, and we're trying to make it more and more of an art center every year. Our three, excuse me, four key objectives, we're going to inspire our students, our instructors, our staff, and our visitors by enhancing the physical environment and our program offerings. That's our key objective. Secondarily, we want to showcase our culture with our art and our instruction to expand awareness, awareness and increase our visibility. And three, support our community by growing a community center based on the arts. Again, this is a big change for us. We're not just an art center based in this community. We truly want to be a community center for everyone that is based on the arts. And then, of course, as all good nonprofits, we want to expand our donated revenue through increased engagement with various stakeholders. So where are we now? What's the impact of the new facility? As you guys are aware, I think I've said that like 10 times, so I'm assuming you all are aware of what's happening. If not, that's why I'm here. We have started offering in September free community workshops. We'll be offering four more in October, four in November, four in December. And this is our way of kind of engaging those who have been otherwise unable to attend classes, whether that be financial, whether that be time, or whatever the case may be, or just maybe they don't feel they're creative. So these free, free community workshops are a way to get the rest of the community involved in the programs at Spruil. We're also offering an unprecedented number of scholarships this year. We receive support from the city with the ARP funds that we've expended. We've been fortunate to receive corporate sponsorship from the Georgia Power Foundation and from the Aprio Foundation. And our board in support has also designated $20,000 to set aside for scholarships for this year. So we're really actively trying to get word out about scholarships. That's for any person, any class. And we have a very simple form on our website that requires about a two-sentence statement of need, and we haven't had to turn down a scholarship yet, so we're very excited about that. We have our Spruil Social, which is another free community program coming up on October 5th in conjunction with our Free Beans with Every Bowl Bowl Sale. Friday night, we'll do chili. Saturday, we'll have a little party out at the new courtyard. We're going to activate that with music, with yard games, and of course, the bowl sale. And most excitedly, we are in the process of hiring a specific employee to help us not only generate these ideas, but activate the space. This is our community programs and event coordinator position. It's a part-time role, and we're looking to get that off the ground now and have that in the place for the remainder of the year and into next year. As far as creative additions, I've mentioned to a couple of you offline, our Dunwoody Dragons. We're hoping to roll those out with the Arts and Culture Month in October, which we're very excited about. We have a very full calendar of programming for that month, as well as additional activations and partnerships that we're looking to you and to the rest of the community to let us know. This is something that we want to continue to provide as we are creating this community center based on the arts. So we turn to you to know, you know, what do you guys want us to do with this space? How can we best program that to serve our community? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I may not have covered.
Thank you. Do you seem to have questions? I just want to commend you on the scholarships and the free social programming. I think giving people a way to gather and meet each other, as you, as many people know, I think is very important. So thank you. And wonderful report. We appreciate all y'all are doing. Thank you. Rachel.
Okay, back again. Parks and Rec Department is honored to call Stage Door Theater a partner. Stage Door Theater's mission is to strengthen our vibrant community of patrons, artists, and youth by providing an intimate and inclusive home where shared stories and human experiences are celebrated. Here to present tonight is artistic director, Justin Ball.
I'd like to say that applause was started by my seven-year-old, so thank you very much. Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. It is one of my greatest pleasures to talk about all the work that we're doing at Stage Door, and tonight is no different. So this is going to be a story in five acts. The first act is what we did this season, all of the artistic programs that we offered the community, a peek behind the curtain to see our business and operations setup, the impact that we've had in community over the last year, the state of nonprofit theater, spoiler alert, it's not great. And then, of course, our future and where we're planning to go from here. So we have four basic types of programming. We have our main stage season. We have our spotlight series, our academy, and then our newly engage, a community engagement programs. We offered four main stage shows this season. They're fully scaled professional productions that run for three weeks that feature Atlanta's best talent. We opened the season with Tuesdays with Maury. That was the best-selling play that we've had in the last three years since the pandemic. And the best was that 40% of our audience was brand-new to Stage Door, had never said foot in before. We followed that up with It's a Wonderful Life, a live radio play. That production was important to us because that was the first production that was Susie-eligible. For those of you who don't know the Susie Awards, they are the Atlanta Tony Awards. Not quite as prestigious, but kind of close. And we had not been eligible for a very long time because we didn't meet the minimum requirements in terms of our board makeup, in terms of number of performances, but we are now eligible and are competing. Our third show on the main stage was the Mad Hatterpillar. This was the world premiere of a children's puppet musical. What was amazing about that is we bust in over 400 kids to see that production. And we also did a sensory-friendly performance. It was a performance dedicated to anyone who has sensory needs. So we had a lot of children there with, on the autism spectrum, who either wore sunglasses because the lights were too bright, or they were allowed to sit on the floor with a blanket, or they were bringing stuffy in with them. But we were able to welcome in a new demographic of our community to that production. And then our last show was Native Gardens, which actually broke the record Tuesdays with Maury said at the top of the season. So we were thrilled with that. And we have our spotlight series. The purpose of this is to shine a spotlight on local artists and arts organizations. We started a partnership with Dad's Garage two years ago. Those evenings still sell out. That had become a great pipeline into our main stage season. I have lots of people who will come in for the first time, and they'll come to an improv night, but then they'll buy a season subscription and join us for the rest of our season. Similarly, Piccadilly Puppets, another 50-year-old organization in Atlanta, they have come out and done several puppet shows, and that is also a pipeline into our academy and camp programs. We turn the spotlight on... We turned the spotlight on two fantastic musical theater performers this year. India Tyree did an evening of song last September and Hannah Marie Smith did a love songs through the decades back in February. We have our amazing academy. We launched this academy at the height of the pandemic. I joined in three days, it'll be my three year anniversary at Stage Door. I joined right after they finished their first year of summer camps. There were fifty kids in the program. We then partnered with Spruil Center for the Arts to do a co-branded summer camp. The next year, that number quadrupled. We had two hundred and seven kids. The next year, we had three hundred and fifty eight, and this year we had five hundred and twelve kids in our program. So our academy goes year round. We have classes, we have camps. Our senior company did the Descendants in the Fall. Our junior and senior companies did Alice in Wonderland this spring. We started a Play in the Day program. This was started by our fantastic Director of Education and Engagement, Bridget McCarthy. This is an opportunity for kids when school is closed for the day, but your parents still have to work. We launched it on Election Day last year. We had twenty seven kids show up for our Play in a Day. And it's just that, they spend six hours putting a story together, putting it on their feet, and their parents come and pick them up and they get to see it at the end of the day. Again, our summer camp program, which I just mentioned, has been going gangbusters. But this is the real thing I'm most proud of, is in the last two years, we went from an organization that had almost no community engagement programs within the institution to impacting nearly four thousand people. We did residencies at Dunwoody Elementary School. We taught every first and second grade student. We did their Oceans of Fun is the name of the musical that they put on. We are doing a residency at the Children's Hospital of Atlanta. We do monthly workshops there with performing arts. We are doing, we did a residency at Montgomery Elementary School. We do, we work with Lead Homeschool Group and this past summer, unfortunately before they closed down, we did a six week summer camp for Clarkston Community Center. We were very sad to see that that organization wasn't able to sustain past, this past summer. But we were able to impact ninety kids there, plus an additional three hundred came to see their showcase at the end of that run. We did two community engagement events this year. We did the Dewali Story Walk with, in conjunction with Create Dunwoody and the Dunwoody Nature Center. And that was such a successful event that Nancy approached me about doing their March Fairy Tale Festival and we did another performance there as well. As I mentioned earlier, we are now eligible for the Susie Awards. We are very excited to be among the company of the Alliance Theater, Actors Express, Horizon Theater, Synchronicity Theater. They're the big theaters in town and we are, we are listed among them as Susie nominations. Those awards will come out in November, but we're very excited for our four nominations. I would also just like to mention that India Tyree won the Broadway World Award for her cabaret last September with us. Onto the business and operations side of things. So as you may be aware, Stage Door Theater, pre pandemic was a three hundred thousand dollar a year organization. And ninety percent of those funds came from ticket sales or individual donations. We are now a four hundred and, we're basically a five hundred thousand dollar organization over two years. The, the revenue has come from, obviously our education program is, is drawing quite a bit of revenue. Our box office is state consistent, but the real changes have been with grants and foundations and corporate partners. Those have been new to Stage Door before the pandemic. Those were, were revenue lines that really didn't exist for the organization. This chart makes me so happy. It's, I have two charts in this presentation and I love them. This shows how much we've changed our revenue structure in just two years. We've absolutely redefined the business model of Stage Door Theater. As you can see, we went from ninety two percent just coming from straight individuals to a much more diverse representation. So that if we have a bad play, or we have a pandemic, or we have something that shuts down one program, it's not gonna, it's not gonna knock us over. It's only gonna make us stumble. We are so grateful to the city of Dunwoody, specifically to Parks and Rec, to Rachel and her team, to Gabe and Brandon. And we've had some really wonderful improvements to our nineteen fifty's elementary school, as Alan referred to it. So our rehearsal room had concrete floors, it had no mirrors. It was not a great place to be teaching dance and stage combat and things that require people to be physical. We love our new floor and our new mirrors in the rehearsal room. We are also grateful for the renovations in the green room, which was the old cafeteria of the nineteen fifty's elementary school. We have new floors in there and we also want to thank ART and Associates. Christopher Drew is one of our former board members. They donated all of the custom made wallpaper for the space, which helped round it out. So we're super grateful. This is just an overview of all of the partnerships that we've had this year from our season sponsors, two of whom are in the audience with us tonight. The foundation support that we've received from the Imlay Foundation, Georgia Council for the Arts, Community Foundation and South Arts. And of course, our community partners, including the city, the nature center, Spruil, Create Dunwoody, and of course, the Women's Club, who not only founded us but continued to help us with our scholarship for year after year. Community impact, so this is the best part. This is why we're here. So this year, Stage Door has helped, has served nearly ten thousand residents. We've been able to offer thirty eight full or partial scholarships to our academy programs in the amount of about ten thousand dollars. According to the Georgia Council for the Arts, the average the average theater goer spends thirty eight dollars in the local economy before they go see the show. I can talk about my board members who go to the same restaurants every time they come before they see the show, or I can talk about when you come to one of our camp showcases on a Friday, how the parents have bought out blooms or the farmer's market for flowers. So we are thrilled that in our efforts to raise Stage Door as a performing arts center here in Dunwoody, that we are contributing directly to the economy of Dunwoody. Sixty percent of our audience lives in Dunwoody or Sandy Springs. The other forty percent come from over a hundred metro Atlanta's upcodes. This is, again, this is my other favorite chart. So if you see, we went from basically having no community impact, other than our patrons who came to see our shows year after year, to helping over thirty five hundred this year. In over two years, that is, that is a remarkable accomplishment. Which should be credited to Bridget McCarthy, our Director of Education and Engagement, to Grace Vandoah, who was the education director before her, and the rest of my team at Stage Door. So the state of nonprofit theater. Obviously, the performing arts were hit harder than most industries with the pandemic. There was an entire swath of audience members who have simply not returned. Either they were too old, they stopped engaging in the ritual of going to live theater, streaming services have interrupted people going to live theater. But this is nationwide. This is not specific to Dunwoody. This is not specific to Atlanta. This is nationwide, audiences are down thirty percent. Federal funding is down sixty percent. Artist pay is down and costs are up. And it makes it a very difficult environment to produce theater in. Just this week, we got the Bridge Grant. Bridge Grant across the board, everybody got eighty percent of what they got last year. The Metro Arts Fund, we got twenty five thousand dollars from them last year. We were awarded, we, we scored eleven points higher on our application this year. And received four thousand dollars instead of the twenty five that we received last year. Mostly because all of the COVID money is drying up, it's not being replaced. And unfortunately, Georgia's fiftieth in arts funding across the country. You will see lots of huge institutions. These are not, these are not mom and pop theaters. These are theaters that have existed for thirty, forty, some of them fifty years, that are closing because of this new reality since the pandemic. And you'll see the Lyric Theater here in Atlanta close. They were an eight hundred thousand dollar a year organization. They were here for thirty seven years and they closed overnight. George Ensemble Theater, they've been here for thirty six years. They suspended programs last year and have relocated, trying to save their organization. This is the climate that we are in right now in, in Atlanta theater and it is getting more desperate by, by, by the year. And we are, we anticipate, once the COVID money is gone, these remaining funds will be shared even further with more organizations, depleting the, the necessary funds that we need. So we'll talk about our future. We are really excited about season fifty one. We are in rehearsals right now for our first show of the year, which is The Mousetrap. Advanced sales are almost double what they were this time last year for Tuesdays with Maury, so I'm hoping that is a trend that continues throughout the year. We will follow that show up with every Christmas, every Christmas story ever told. It is a hilarious comedy about three actors who are tired of doing a Christmas carol and they tried to do any other show but a Christmas carol. Followed by Cry It Out, which is an amazing comedy about three young mothers. After, it's about the fourth trimester. They meet every, every afternoon in the backyard of someone's house. It's the only place where all three baby monitors reach. And it is a hilarious comedy where we're trying to reach out to the, to the young moms and dads in Dunwoody. We're doing a co-production with Agnes Scott. We're doing the twenty fifth annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. This is being directed and choreographed by Candy McClellan, who's been written up in the AJC as one of the, the major artists in our community. And we're excited to be presenting that on campus at Agnes Scott in April. And then our last show will be next August, which is a play called Orange. And it is about a Pakistani woman on the autism spectrum and her twenty four hour adventure in Orange County, California. But we are definitely trying to tap into some of the local demographics here in Dunwoody for that show. So these are the biggest challenges that we face at Stage Door. We are, our programs are, are heading in the right directions. Our, our revenue is, is increasing. But we are, we are going to have a hard time replacing the funds that are being taken away from, from state funding. As I said, Georgia's ranked fiftieth. COVID relief is going to be gone by the end of twenty five. And one of the major sources for funding for all of these theaters is the mayor's office for cultural affairs. They give away almost two million dollars to eighty five nonprofits. Most theaters our size receive twenty five to forty thousand dollars a year from the mayor's office. And we are simply ineligible because we are located in Dunwoody. And so it is extremely hard to replace those funds, especially when we're competing with all of those same organizations for the few grants that we are eligible for. I mean, the other big challenge that we're facing is visibility in the community. I think many of you know that we, we exist in the Dunwoody Cultural Arts Center, but most of the residents do not. The number of times that I have people walk in and I, I insist that when we are in the theater and building and painting the set, that we leave the doors open because at least twice a week, I have someone walk in and say, oh, I didn't know there was a theater here. Oh, can I see a brochure? Can I, can I, can I hear about more about what you're doing? I mean, it's simply because when you drive by, there's no sense that there's a theater in this town. And we would love to not be a fifty year old best kept secret. We would love to figure out how to get that secret out. I've, I've given some examples here of how cities have chosen to fund their local theaters. You know, the city of Marietta does a three percent tax on car rentals. And that goes to their local theaters. The city of Sandy Springs, they dedicate forty percent of their hotel motel tax to their local performing arts center. The city Alpharetta is creating a cultural and performing arts center in North Point Mall and they're going to basically absorb the cost of that, of that small nonprofit. And then these are all the theaters that are getting money directly from the mayor's office right now. These are our competitors, these are our contemporaries. But we are just simply not getting that, that funding. And that is going to cripple us in the long run. So our goals for visibility is that we want to distinguish ourselves as a performing arts center. We want to promote our brand and we want to differentiate ourselves from the other residents of the cultural arts center. We were very fortunate enough to, to receive some funding from Michael Starling's office for a mural out front. But a mural is not, a mural by itself is a little complicated because I, I would imagine if someone put a mural on the side of that building, someone would say, Spruil got a new mural. And so we're trying to figure out a way to have our name be included as part of that. And I've had some really wonderful productive conversations with some council members and with the mayor, and I'm really looking forward to figuring out a solution for how we can figure out how we can increase our visibility in the community. So that is my presentation, but I would love to take any questions that you all have and I would also love to introduce you to, to my board that's here to support me tonight, but let's take questions.
No, why don't you introduce your board first, please?
Happy to. So with me is Aaron Logan. Wailing Color. Our chair behind is Don Boykin. Next to him is Alan Salas.
Hi.
And that's my daughter.
Okay. Right.
Last year when I came to the council and at the end they were like, do you guys have any board members who'd like to speak? And there were crickets. I didn't have anybody with me, so I brought my whole bench this time.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Justin. When you see the, the chart of what you've been doing over the last few years, you started at a really rough time in the economy and everything else, so hats off to you, kudos for really the engagement. You know, what are, what are some achievable, you know, the goal should be, what, SMART goals, specific, achievable, measurable, realistic, timeless? So the idea of getting some kind of marquee signage, right? There, there is a legacy sign with a brick that it's, but it's covered under the trees and no one can see and so on. So I'd, I'd think about, you know, maybe we can, you know, what can we do short term to help that as a minimum out there? I'd like, I definitely would, would support that effort. And then, you know, we have bigger pictures with, with funding in general, but we really do want to continue supporting you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Really, really appreciate your efforts to build community and also, you know, for, for decades in Dunwoody, though there was a theater, families with children who were interested had to drive. And so I know that the families and the community whose children are participating are so grateful to have an opportunity at home. I've attended some of the academy performances. They're always wonderful. And again, I appreciate you developing everything you've done and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you're fine. You're fine. Yep. Consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the two items that are there?
Moved to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I think because these are all discussion items, Jessica, I can run this. Just let me know if I'm going too fast. Actually, I think because this is a first read, you actually have to read the first one, sorry, when you're ready.
Item number six is the first read, review and consideration of a text amendment to amend chapter twenty six to update poll banner regulations.
I think they're working on signing back into the computer.
Thank you. It's up for us. I don't know.
Okay, great. So at the twenty twenty three city council retreat, city council expressed a desire to expand the use of banners to advertise city events. This is something that many other cities in the area do and we have already done that. You may have seen some of those in Dunwoody Village, Perimeter Center. And this text amendment also serves to line up the code with current practices for poll banners as well as capturing all organizations that presently install poll banners. And so the proposed text amendment mostly updates the dimensions of poll banners, clarifies the minimum height of banners above sidewalks, clarifies the permit process and adjusts some wording. So one of the main regulation changes is to adjust the required size, which is thirty inches wide by seventy two inches tall of each poll banner to clarify that this is a maximum rather than the only size allowed. In practice, some of the poll banners that people install end up being a little smaller, so this would just make this measurement a maximum. The other one is adjusting the height for poll banners to be a minimum of seven feet above grade. And as a quick note, all of the current brackets adhere to that. Except in the following cases, which is that eight feet above a multi-use path, which includes side paths and greenways. The reason for this is that that's the minimum clearance required for people on bicycles. And then seventeen feet above a roadway and that, that metric comes directly from the manual for uniform traffic control devices. Lastly, it would be broadening the number of organizations who can install a poll banner and no longer tying that requirement to a special event permit. The reason for that is that in practice, we have a bunch of organizations in Dunwoody that regularly install poll banners that are exempt from the special event permit process. Dunwoody Nature Center is a really good example of an organization that puts up their yearly Butterfly Festival poll banners, but is not required to get a special event permit. And so in the packet to you, we provided a list of criteria for eligible organizations in the form of a memo that would be stored with the city clerk. So staff recommends approval on this text amendment and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, same by Rob.
Yeah, I was looking at, my packet has an administrative standards slide. Is that, is that in your presentation?
It's right here. Yeah, those are the administrative standards that we provide.
Yes, can you help clarify for me that second bullet point there about an event where the city or its organization is contributing? So say Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Would, would they be able to use poll banners under this requirement?
Yeah, provided that the city is contributing in kind of contributions or direct sponsorship, which
But if they're not, if you're just a nonprofit that wants to promote an event, would you, you would be restricted then? Is that, am I reading that right?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
If you're a nonprofit, let's say that has an event you want to promote, but the city isn't sponsoring it, you wouldn't be able to put up poll banners under this requirement. Is that correct?
So if you held a poll banner permit in 2024, you would be able to. But yes, that's correct.
So I guess I'm asking a really roundabout way. Are there organizations that are currently able to put up banners that would not be able to with these changes?
No, not that we anticipate. All of them have put up poll banner permits in 2024, or we contribute in some way to them.
So just to clarify, because I think I understand. Because there are some events not happening this year. Actually, I can think of really one event, and I think they, this probably wouldn't apply. This is interesting. So Dunwoody Methodist has historically had a holiday festival. They're not having it this year, like a holiday craft festival, and I think they put up poll banners. They do. So they are not having it in 24. So does that mean they would not be eligible in 26? Should they be able to bring it back? I think they
Matt Mayor?
Yes.
Let me help on that one. We'll go back and look at that because that one event I didn't know was not going to happen, but we can look at that on a revision for approval.
Okay. It's just something to think about. I was just going through my head. But also like, so, so like Dunwoody Women's Club for their home tour, which quite frankly mostly happens not in Dunwoody because most of the homes are in Sandy Springs. They don't get services from this. They don't get anything, but because they're having it in 24, they'll be eligible in 25? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Rob.
So I guess then to follow up, if a, say a church wants to start a new event, never have done it before, they wouldn't be able to use poll banners?
This is correct.
Right.
Do, do we want to maybe establish some sort of standard? I mean, or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But maybe, you know, we can talk about it, but I think it's, I just think it's, I think we have to be careful opening the door. But perhaps there is a standard.
We will look in that. We started doing a discussion as we were drafting this, and part of it was having an existing relationship with the city for the promotion on a something in the city right away was standard one. And then grandfathering those that have been using it for years was standard two.
Okay. Joe.
I think there could be some kind of format in the future to leave open for consideration on a situational basis.
I think the struggle is, is we're not really supposed to regulate content.
By the
So we'll, we're sending it back for them to work on it. That's where we are now. We're sending it back to work on that.
Like for instance, a perimeter CID, do they do poll banners? Would they want to do poll?
We would be tied with them in a financial relationship as the income.
The CAC, you know, just these other partnerships, backpack buddies. Whatever. We can go on, so.
Okay, we're sending it back for y'all to take a look at these questions. Thank you. Next up is Michelle. Here is. Are you called up? Jessica, are you ready? You're good? Okay. My good. Oh, sorry. Are you sharing something with us or no? Because there's nothing on the screen. Sorry, that's why I wasn't looking up. Okay. That's it. Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. So this is a discussion item. It is the Mount Vernon Road at Tilly Mill Road for a contract amendment for design and right away revisions. So this is a map that was showed to you earlier at the retreat earlier this year. It is the 10 year project plan along the corridor along Mount Vernon. And it shows the construction timeline. So here you can see our segment at Mount Vernon at Tilly Mill is scheduled for 2026 construction. This is a perspective view and it is looking westbound. The project was originally intended to address intersection improvements at Mount Vernon and Tilly Mill, specifically to add left turn lanes in. But as we went through concept and through public input, we added shared use path and also sidewalks to the project. So this was also presented back to council when concept was approved. So this is a map from the Trail Master Plan. You can see our project is P3. It is currently in right away acquisition. So design and right away is budgeted using SLOSS 1 funding and construction is using SLOSS 2 funding. So here you can see that our project will connect with the shared use path that is currently in design, which is P2. And then we'll continue on to N11, which is going to be Vermac to the village. So this is just a timeline of the project. So in council approved the award for final design in 2020. Right away acquisition began in December of 22. And we are currently still in right away acquisition. It is still ongoing. We anticipate closing the remaining parcels shortly and then completing acquisition this year. You know, this acquisition did take a little bit longer than we initially anticipated. You know, we make every effort to work with each of the property owners. And that can result sometimes in multiple revisions and delays. Just in general, honestly, right away acquisition is becoming a lengthier process. And a lot of this is due to, like, property owners are changing. It's difficult to get in contact with the property owner, especially if it's a corporation. And then if it's a corporation, there's multiple sign offs that have to happen. So it is becoming a lengthier process. But once we do complete this acquisition, we will be able to provide NTP to the utility companies. And they can begin their relocation activities. We have received all of the utility companies' relocations, their activities and their schedules for completion. So based on the schedules we have, the utility relocation should wrap up near the end of 2026. The majority of that time is Georgia Power. They have to acquire their own right away, and then they also have to procure their materials. So that is a lengthy process. And that is also subject to change depending on their acquisition timeframe. So based off of these, that utility schedule, we do anticipate being able to advertise our project for construction at the end of 2025. So this is a, depicts the typical section. And again, here you see the six foot sidewalk as part of the, our new project moving forward. You'll see the medians. Here are the median locations are at Oxford Chase Way, Tilly Mill Road, North Chester Court. And those are really to support the left turn lanes for going into those side roads. So the contract amendment will increase the contract from 170,000 to 252,000 dollars. This includes $55,000 for design changes that have resulted from right away acquisition and utility coordination. And that was mainly with Georgia Power and with Colonial Pipe. Additionally, the amendment will cover the cost for revising the plans from a five foot sidewalk to a six foot sidewalk, which is in line with previous council direction on other projects. This amendment will also include $12,000 for design contingencies and $15,000 allowance for construction bidding and administration tax if needed. The current budget does have sufficient funds to allocate, allocated to cover this amendment. So staff recommends the approval of this contract amendment at the next council meeting, which is on October 15. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions? Uh, Joe?
Hey, Michelle, I'm maybe going to ask Eric sometime in the future. The, the, thank you for putting the presentation together. The slide that you showed, I, I need a little more. I think it might be good in the future for council to, if you showed that project timeline slide, just going to go back to that for a second. Maybe we can help peel back the onion and get us a little more one-on-one understanding because it's kind of opaque. About like the utility relocations, for example, right? Like maybe, maybe we can put it together in the next quarter, and we get a session together with council and just kind of give us a real one-on-one of what really happens and how it works and maybe how it's happened in the past. And then we could maybe look at what are we looking to build out over the next three to five years? And how, how soon can we, I'm just going to try to nudge as possible other projects. If, if it's, if it's merely just a funding issue, I'd, I'd say, okay, we'll come to council because we have SLOSS funding in different buckets. How, how soon can we, you know, get those utility relocations started? Because what I am very, I was like glasses half full and I was so, so, you know, wanting to see this come to fruition, but obviously it's the utilities is always a, seems to be a thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's utilities and right of way acquisition and right away is just taking a lot longer. And it's, it's not just locally here, it's across the board everywhere, honestly. And then utilities are also taking a long time for relocations. And that's due to demand. It's labor resources, it's materials, it's, it's their own right away acquisition. So that's kind of, utilities are a little bit outside of our control because they, they have to work on their timeline.
And we can put that on our legislative agenda for next year.
Yeah. They do, but Georgia Power has a tremendous amount of
Yeah, I know.
Power in this state.
Anyway.
Not to be, not to use a pun or whatever.
Oh, I did, I did have a couple. I think I, but thank you for your email for the clarification on the, on the buffer. Thank you so much. And in future, we got time to talk about it. I, I want to, want to say the public art concept, concept component, but I, I did drop a note up of thinking of just, you know, where the power lines go over that, that ridge line. And, and if at that point, of course, it's now we're under Georgia Power, but instead of, it's not either or for public art, but like a little roadside rest area for the users of that path. So if you thought of like, it could be just a rectangular area, 20 feet long and 10 foot wide with, with, with a picnic table. And maybe a temporary sun shale, shale, sun shade sale thing to keep, and then throw a drinking fountain out there and, and a little free library and a little kiosk with the information sign, you know, so just that, that wayfinding, you know, where they're, they're there. Just, I'm just, I know this is way out, but if we do have a room, I, I'm a dreamer, so just kind of thinking about it. Okay? Thanks.
John.
Michelle, thank you for the presentation. I don't think council has many other questions on this matter. So if you don't mind, I'm going to change the subject just a hair. Earlier, there was a topic on the safety action plan and the rapid beacons. It's now three rapid beacons really close to each other. The way I'm looking at them on peeler. And I don't understand the why. You know, when I look at, you know, communities down the street like Village Mill and others, I don't understand why there's three rapid beacons so close to each other. You got it on sharing lane, you got it on sharing drive, and you got it over at the back entrance to the park. Just, it seems like a lot to me, and I think our money could be better spent. I'm not sure. I'm not questioning that we doing it. I mean, I agree, safety is safety. I'm just not sure the numbers to me facilitate having three so close to each other when there could be other locations. If you have any insight, if you want to get back to me on the future in the sense of the Village Mill community and thousands of houses trying to cross over to the park. I mean, I know there's sidewalk that goes to a question. There's, there's, there's opportunities for better improvement. I'm just not sure the ones that we're looking at right next to each other makes sense to me.
Yeah, we'll circle back with you. I'll, I'll need to talk with staff internally and get those details for you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Consent? Oh, no, but should we put it in consent? Is it, is it okay with people? Okay. That's fine. Consent. All right, Rachel.
Too fast. All right. Last one from me, I promise. So this one's a little different. We, we have started the process of, of roll coating. There we go. Our rubber surfacing that's at our playgrounds. Typically, when rubber surface is initially laid, you get about 10 to 15 years based on the wear and tear used at the park, so on and so forth. And this year we had Pernosha Park, Georgetown Park and Winwood Hollow Park, all, all be due, if you will, for roll coat. Brook Run is next on our list. But based on how, how we've, we've tackled the projects, it's being presented solo, even though the, all four projects will now be at $72,000. So there's kind of a different approach here. Georgetown Park, like I said, we, we did it in 2016. Winwood Hollow, we did 2020. Pernosha has never held the roll coat because it's not your typical playground structure. It's under the exercise stations. We've, we've repaired in other areas as needed. And then here's the, the pictures here are Brook Run Playground. Obviously, this is our busiest park. It sees the heaviest amount of foot traffic. So now it has come due for a roll coat. What roll coat does is essentially it's almost like a, an epoxy that they put over. In Brook Run case, so the repair, kind of these dark spots, as you're saying. And, excuse me, then they put a coat over the top of it just to help seal everything in and help it last another, another two to four years. Pernosha Park, these, this is the detail of the work we've already completed. So with a three with Pernosha, Georgetown and Winwood Hollow, that brought us to about $42,000. Now with Brook Run, we're over that $50,000 threshold, which is why I'm presenting it by itself, if you will. All of this has been paid for out of SLOSS. I did work with purchasing on the best way to purchase. So thank you, John. Thank you still here on, on how to tackle this one. So really, I'm just here to ask for Brook Run specifically. We are asking for $30,000, which does give us a little bit of contingency just in case there are some deeper spots they need to fix because of the wear and tear Brook Run. And then I've also worked with purchasing to add Core Cat, who is doing all the rubber surfacing for us. They're also the ones doing the two bridges part shades. We're very familiar with the work. We've been very pleased. And because when we had our RFQ for standby skills last year, we didn't have anyone respond to the playground surfacing repair category, adding them. So going forward, we'll be able to do this hopefully a little, little easier. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Rob.
So just, you, you answered one of my questions in your presentation, which was how long this coating lasts? So the second question is, is this the kind of thing that you repeat every two to four years or do you at some point have to replace the entire rubberized?
Yes. So Yeah, the, the roll coat helps. So Brook Run, again, is probably going to see the most wear and tear roll, have to do some deeper repairs. The roll coat should last two to four years.
So then when you do another one of those, or in, in two to four years, are we looking about replacing the surface in its entire?
Hopefully we can do roll coat this year, give us another four years before we have to revisit a whole new service because we just did that in 2020.
Okay. Now, I'm just, I'm just curious because obviously you want to extend the, the use as long as you can and as efficiently as you can, but it's nice to know if there's a big ticket resurfacing coming down the road. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Stacy?
I'll go back to Catherine. Sorry.
Just one quick question, like obviously Winwood Pernosha and the other one got done and we didn't even know about it. Do you have to close Brook Run Playground when you're doing this?
We will. And we've already talked to Core Cat. It won't be the entire playground all at once. They're, they're really good. We're so, I like working with them. They can kind of do little pieces at a time, just so something is open. Yep. The other ones we had to close completely just because the playgrounds are so much smaller.
Is that why Winwood Hollow was closed a few weeks ago? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
If you just did Brook Run in 2020 and you're talking, saying it's best, it's going to last 10 to 15 years. It's not sounding like 10 to 15 years if you're thinking in four years or you're going to extend to four years more. I don't, it doesn't sound like we're getting to 10. And we're certainly not getting to 15 before you're really talking about replacement.
Brook Run, yeah, just because of the, just how, how heavy it's hit, frankly. And that's something that Core Cat is, is, that's part of the evaluation is then to go out and look at the deeper spots. So yeah, hopefully, hopefully this roll coat, because I'm So yeah, hopefully, hopefully this roll coat, because in four years, we probably should have done it a little sooner. And Burke Run, just because it's, it's hit heavy, you know, really one every one to two years. Probably, we'll probably do a lot more frequent way forward.
So we're hopefully get 10, 15 for the other parks?
We should, yeah.
Okay. So should we be looking while we have the opportunity before the, it has to be done, it, it surfaces, it might last longer? Like, is there some, I, I know people hate mulch, but is there, and I am really not very fond of it myself, but are there surfaces that might last longer? Then is there a higher, I don't even know. It's just something to think about because it's clear. We just replaced that surface in 2020. It's 2024. It already looks pretty worn based on the pictures you showed. And then, so this will fix it for a few years. And what you're saying is, is then we would evaluate, you know, obviously it's really heavily used. Is there best practices? I'm not telling you, I don't know, but maybe that's something we should be looking into the next few years, John.
Yeah.
Rachel, can you go back two slides or at least one slide with the photos?
This one?
Yeah, I think that's the one.
And these are the worst pictures for emphasis, I will say.
I'm interested in that photo to the right. And the reason is 15 years ago I moved into a house. I redid all my floors. They're perfect. They were pristine. We laid down carpets and my three boys tore the hell out of my house, except where those carpets are. Now, I'm guessing those are the swings, the far right hand side.
Those pads, yep.
The pads. Is there a way, like those pads or maybe a matching color? Is there a way to put a protective layer, a carpet, a pad underneath the swings at the bottom of the slide? Is there a way to protect?
What's how impact areas?
Protect our hardwood floors from those boys of mine and put down something nice. You know, that'll protect our underlayment. Is there anything like that? Can you explain?
Probably, and Core Cat would have that so I can have them look at it.
I think that might be an investment that we could look at that would save wear and tear long run. Because again, otherwise we're just going to have to redo all of our floors.
Yeah, I'll have them take a deeper look at those high traffic areas, if you will. Yeah.
Good analogy.
Yeah, that's good analogy.
We're getting ready to redo ours too after the dog died. All right. So I think this can be consent. And then, because the other stuff you'll have to bring back to us later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard McLeod.
All right. Good evening. This is a quick update on where we are with the comprehensive plan and the code update. Just a little bit on public input. The city of Dunwoody entered into an agreement with TSW to begin this back on June 10th of 2024. The process is going to take about two years to complete. We're just in the beginning of the stages, but we have had several of the public inputs. We have had staff go out and hand out flyers at several parks. We also had last Sunday or a week ago Sunday, I was at the Hispanic Cultural Heritage Event. It was good to see you Catherine and Mayor. We also had pop event at the village, which was successful. And we and we're also doing the survey, which just recently closed. We've had 1,076 responses to the survey. I think the last one we did, we had about 1,500 and that was with the largest responses we've ever had. So here's a scheduling. You can see where we are. There are lots of further, there's steering committees, public meetings, and we will be doing another survey in the first quarter next year. Here's the pics in the park. Staff and TSW at the back to school event. This is at that same event advertising the public input meeting. TSW went out and bought a $50 gift card and they gave it away to a lucky vendor. Now, this is where Kathy went out to Ravinia with the mayor's event and she handed out those cards. We got 33 responses just from that event. And this is the public workshop held at Park Place. Which was a really fun event. We had several people comment that we did it like a store. So they'd go around like shop in the store and then they would check out. And then they would go outside and, and pinpoint where they would like to see those improvements. So it was a very successful event. And that's it. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? Catherine.
What was your head count at Park Place?
Probably 50. We're a little disappointed, but Park Place was so kind. They bent over backwards for us. They said anytime that we want to use it. So, yeah.
I would say I attended that event. I, I also thought it was very clever and, and very well done. Just kudos to the SAW for coming up with that because I, it was, it was fun.
Yeah. But thank you, Rob and Stacy for coming to that.
Anybody else? Yeah, you know, I, this is critical to me. I think y'all have done a really good job so far. I'm impressed with the, who's completed the survey and input from a, we're hitting a lot of our markers pretty well. I'd like to see us consider was great. You were at the Hispanic event. It might be nice to do a meeting with corners like we did for, was that pedestrian safety or whatever? Just to hit a community that's not going to show up in any of our things. And the survey was only in English. So go ahead.
Also, they've started doing the stakeholder interviews and thank you for those of you who attended today. Continue into the future. So.
Okay.
Just kind of to piggyback on your comment, one suggestion that I made was Two Bridges Park kind of hits a, a group of the, that doesn't really participate much. Kind of there's apartments around there. I don't know if we have anything with the parks planned that you could piggyback onto. But to me, that would be a great location to try to, to pick up some, some community feedback.
We did have a lot of people, because I asked at the event down at Park Place, where those young people came from, and many of them were from those apartments right out there.
I also want to tell an anecdotal story. So last year when we did the high, the Edge City Plan, we had a meeting in the Montessori School parking lot by what is Two Bridges Park. And there was a young woman who was a nurse at North Side who came to talk about what she'd like to see in Dunwoody. She didn't live in Dunwoody, but now she's moved to High Street. So I think it's good. I think it's all good. The more outreach we do. All right. Anybody else? All right. That concludes our discussion items. Public comments. I have a card for Alan Salas. I think you're about last couple of people left. You'll have three minutes, sir. I think we're ready. Just go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Thank you. I'm Alan Salas. I'm treasurer of Stage Door Theater. Been the treasurer since 2017. I'm also serve on the Create Dunwoody Board with Catherine and Rachel and as treasurer and also the Dunwoody High School Gridiron Club. So when you're CPA people, CPA, you're, you're, you're up for grabs there. So I did want to just make a couple of comments about our presentation. I've been on the board, as I said, since 2017. We've gone through a lot since then. I didn't know what I was getting into, starting with Stage Door. We had COVID, which was very tough. At the time, our community was really a limited community of seasoned subscribers. And it was about 1,200 or so residents here in the, in the city. As COVID hit, we, as a board, we understood the legacy of Stage Door. Really to preserve that legacy, we had to make changes. And we had to look for the future. We didn't want to see this organization just fall apart. I mean, during COVID, there was no, there was very limited help that we could get. And there was no, when people stopped coming to theater, we were shut down. We had, we had to think kind of outside the box. So through COVID and at that time, some board members transitioned off and on. We had, we found Justin as the, and I'm, I'm the only remaining board member, I think, from that time. I've just kind of been part of this process. We found Justin and he has done an excellent job. His presentation shows some of the growth that we've, we've been through. We've, we've really made some great strides, reaching community from just here and, and different demographics. We had, he had mentioned, you know, we've, we've got the summer camps now. We have, we now have, we're reaching new adults for dad's garage. We've, we were doing things with seniors and disadvantaged communities. We've been able to get grants now because we're reaching some of these extra demographics within our community. And I think it's important for the city to understand that this has been a long and tough process. And we're asking, you know, the city, we appreciate some of the things that the city is, has helped us with in the past and looking forward to working with y'all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good time. All right. City manager comments?
No need for an executive session tonight.
Council comments, anybody? Monday is September 3rd, Monday, September 30th is Georgia Reads Day. And some of us will be visiting schools. We look forward to some of our education related nonprofits entering the governor's competition for improving literacy outcomes and winning. We hope. And so with that, I see no other comments. Anybody? I need a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Rob.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? Hearing none. I call the question. All in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.